Gonna open the regular city council meeting of Shelton, Washington for July 17th, 2018. It's called the order. Let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Couple of housekeeping. We're gonna have Chief McKern come in later. Or when he... Sorry, Randy Point, I thought he was over there. For a presentation, we'll work that in the council reports if he's here. Okay, next on our agenda, we have second quarter report from Heidi McCutcheon from the Mason County Shelton Chamber Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. It's my pleasure to present the second quarter report on tourism, specifically visitor information services for the city of Shelton. Our Facebook page is one way that we get words out about what's happening in Mason County. During second quarter, our Facebook page attracted just shy of 165,000 unique users and had a weekly average of engaging around 4,500 users. Down there, under the photos, you can see the Facebook reach by city, so Shelton, the people that live in Shelton, Washington, there was 104,000 interactions with them. Olympia continues to be the second most popular city outside of Mason County, well, outside of Shelton, at nearly 18,000 unique users, followed by Union, Belfair, Greatview, and Seattle. During second quarter, you can see our top two posts there. One of the things that we, I was really excited for the chamber to implement this year was our first inaugural Blues and Brews Festival. There was about two tickets sold two weeks in advance, 90 tickets sold the day before, and we went through about 1,200 wristbands. So the mini panic attacks, I think, helped, must have helped, get people there. So it was a really great event. Feedback's good. All of the, many of the restaurants and retailers in the area said that they saw a big influx in foot traffic that day just from people, this festival only lasted till five, so as soon as that was over, people went and ate and continued to stay downtown. So I think it was a great community event, as well as speaking with the people that were there. There were people from Gig Harbor and as far as Issaquah and Vancouver that came specifically for the event. So it looks like it was a good draw. Visitor accounts. Currently, we have more than 20 volunteers who work at the Hoodsport Visitor Information Service, or Center, as well as the caboose. You can see the visitor counts there. It is an increase, May and June, in a total for second quarter over last year's numbers. On the backside of that, you can see the phone calls increased substantially this time. We anticipate, or we believe this was because of the Blues and Brews event, people calling to find out more information about that. And I think tourism overall, Olympic National Park and the Forest Service are reporting record numbers. So I think that that has quite a bit to do with it as well. We also began to have a wilderness officer in the Hoodsport Visitor Center. So in the past, if you wanted a wilderness permit for Olympic National Park, you'd have to go up to Quillisine to get that. So now that they're able, people are able to get it in Hoodsport, it saves them quite a trip. So we're seeing a lot of people foot traffic through the Hoodsport Center for that. Skipping to the website, remains steady, as always, the online events calendar is the most visited page there. And then we also did another issue of our Byte magazine, which has been mailed out to about 18,000 people across Mason County, specifically Shelton, Union, and Hoodsport. So that concludes my report. Does anybody have any questions?
It was a great event. We enjoyed that.
Agree. Any other comments for Heidi?
No.
So you have a date for next year?
We'll continue to do it Saturday of Father's Day weekend. I've got a lot of feedback that people really enjoyed that and that a good excuse to take dad out and support the community at the same time, so.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Okay, next, we're gonna hear from Public Works Director Craig Gregory on a Department of Commerce Building Communities Grant pertaining to YMCA.
So thanks, Mayor, and council members. I think we got it out to you this afternoon. We did try to complete the four top questions of the grant survey and looking for feedback from all of the council members on question number five and basically just other comments for that. So we understand that this is not complete and certainly would like feedback on any additional comments on the other four questions. And basically today, looking at the schedule of when the YMCA, South Town YMCA needs this back to be submitted, that is August 8th. Our next meeting, council meeting, is not until the 7th. So without this being completed, we still would recommend or suggest that the council authorize the mayor or concur to have the mayor sign this when we do get a completed version out to all of the council members after all of the input and we get this completed. But we would anticipate, hopefully by the end of the week, getting this completed and being able to get this back to the YMCA.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. I don't want to wait till...
Yeah, as I say, Mayor Rogers, would you mind, you wanted to set a date for us to get back to you with any comments or anything like that?
I'd say the end of the week.
End of this week?
End of this week. And that would get it to them by Monday, for sure, for that work, Gregory.
I think if we get comments back from you by the end of the week, we can put something together on Monday and then get it shipped back out to the council Monday afternoon for final authorization to complete that and then get it for your signature on Tuesday.
Okay.
If that timeframe works.
So where to make comments on each one of these?
Yes, and especially that, that bottom, other comments, anything that the council would like to add to that, we would highly recommend that.
And that timeframe works for you as far as, not to rush? Okay, so comments?
Mayor, I would think that comments should be directed to me.
Yes, definitely to Vicki. Sorry.
So you want it by Friday?
So Vicki, is by Fri-
So direct your comments to me, and I will, you know...
Is that time scheduled to work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, okay, so all comments to Vicki by Friday at 5:00?
Yes, that would be, that would be great.
Okay, all right.
And then she can give me a timeframe to get it done by Monday afternoon.
9:00 a.m.
It's gotta be clear. Set an expectation.
There you go.
Thank you, Vicki.
Appreciate that.
Are all good with that?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'll leave Chief McKern, and when he comes in, we'll try to work him in the next open spot. So we'll move on to council reports, starting with council member Dorsey.
All right. First, I'll start off with, I had a four, five days off last week to take my grandson to Disneyland, and it was...
Hot.
It was hot. Anyway, it was a good time. Today, we, I went to a luncheon at Kiwanis down at the Magnolia Room with Mr. Rogers, and we talked a little bit about council, talked a little bit about the former commission, and then answered questions and all that. I'm sure Bob's gonna say something too, so I'll let him talk about it more if he'd like. What else we got here? We had, today I had a meeting with Mason Transit Board at 4:00. And then, of course, we're here. And upcoming, we, I have meetings with the staff and Vicki, you know, Vicki, with our briefings, and looking forward to interviewing for the city managers coming up toward the end of the month. And I'm sure we're, we're all looking forward to that, so. And I'll quit there.
Okay. Council member Nisco?
Pretty quiet week. Of course, last week, I spent a week at the beach with my family, and I believe it was a ribbon cutting on the 26th, and city manager interviews at the end of the month, so. About it.
Thanks. As council member Dorsey mentioned, we had lunch at the Kiwanis today and good questions on the switch from commission to council. We had former Mayor Tarrant there and council member, Commissioner Parnell. And I joked with them, not to, I wasn't gonna allow them to ask questions, but they asked most of the questions, and they were very good questions. This, this last week, I met with Erin Hall from the Olympic Master Builders. She had some questions about some things that they were maybe looking into helping us with, and they were gonna contact, she was just feeling us out, and probably contact you, if she hasn't already, and other council members on some of our discussions. Gonna meet with EDC Jennifer Baria on Thursday, I believe, and then... I think that's it. I think we have one other, oh, the community expo on Friday, which I'm sure Heidi's involved with, and Deidra. And I think that's, and a radio interview... You're gonna do Thursday morning? Okay, I'll let you take that.
Perfect. So last week, we had a state budget training and legislative priorities meeting with city council, which was very informative. I thank the staff for bringing forth recommendations, and I think we had some great discussion. Looking forward to opportunities to receive funding from the state level to support projects here. This week, I also have plans to meet with Jennifer Baria from the EDC Thursday morning at the radio station Focus on Shelton regarding the YMCA. And I've been responding to various citizen inquiries, coordinating with staff, and so I appreciate Vicki, your, your help in navigating that.
Today, I had a meeting with Jennifer at the EDC. It was a quick meeting, but it was good. Thursday, I'm going to be at the radio with you, talking about the YMCA. And then the Edward Jones, is that a ribbon cutting? That is this Thursday, isn't it, at 3:30? 4:30. Okay, so I will be there with that. Friday, we have the Byte, and I have, next week, I have my Board of Health and my Memorial Hall board meeting, and the briefings, and then the interviews coming up at the end of the month. That's my, my schedule.
Council member Shannon?
So good evening. I'd like to start off by actually extending my appreciation to our local firefighters and emergency communicators, dispatchers, and call takers. The past few days have been pretty eventful, to say the least, with the wildfire and threat in the county and in the local area here. It's tough, arduous work, and a lot of the folks there are working in a volunteer capacity or partners with the, with Central Mason Fire as well. And yep, last night, watched helicopters fly over my house for several hours, and it's a real threat for us here. And just to keep that in mind in the backs of our minds throughout the summer season, to be, to be diligent with, with that threat and to be appreciative of that service that is put forth. As far as my, my plan from last week, I met Friday at a constituent meeting in the afternoon. And then also in the afternoon, I had a meeting with the EDC and the county to discuss some land use planning in the UGA. This week, have my weekly meeting with city leadership and EDC board member orientation on Friday morning. That's it.
Can I say one thing about the fires?
You may.
Very important. They're just not out in the county, but they're in the city.
Yeah.
And they can start with a car starting up, sitting on some dread, dead grass, and starting your car up, and boom, it's off and running. So please be very careful out there.
Thank you. Okay. Now it's time for general public comment, so we'll ask, are there any comments?
Yes, Randy Lewis.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Randy Lewis. I'd like to take a moment to talk about process. Recently, public comment was allowed for business agenda items. Why has this gone away? Separately, standard practice on agenda items has been for staff to present, the public to comment, then council discussion. Two meetings ago, this order was reversed. Tom and I made public comments on the garbage deal, and staff is allowed to drone on and on, doubling down on misinformation. Because true interactive public input has been denied to us, we had to wait until the next meeting to correct this misinformation. The mayor has been meticulous in describing changes to the agenda just before the council meetings. So why was an item on this meeting's action agenda, the proposed garbage contract amendments, moved from last week to this week without a word of explanation? We'll talk about that item later. It has been stated that the garbage deal has been discussed for a decade. Discussing something over a long time is not prima facie proof that correct conclusions have been made, especially given documented misinformation from the source. For example, the Catholic Church discussed for centuries that the sun revolved around the earth. They even tortured Galileo when he dared to suggest the earth revolved around the sun. He probably even said, "This is a done deal. We don't want to talk about it." It has been, it has been said that this speech should be run like a business. First, this is not a business. This is a monopoly. Second, not, not once have I heard of an actual business exiting operations for a particular line requiring a 41.9% kickback so no one gets laid off. It is not the responsibility of the garbage ratepayers to guarantee job security for the bureaucracy. We also believe the goal is to expand the bureaucracy. Consider last year, when the contract was signed and Mason County Garbage sent 1.7 million to the city, new unauthorized positions were created. Ratepayers are now paying two sets of salaries and expenses. One funds Mason County Garbage operations and waste connections overhead. The other funds expenses for a city that performs little or no garbage service. We were hoping the new council, which had nothing to do with this deal, would conduct a workshop with true public input to determine what alternatives may be available to fix this questionable deal. We are taking no one's word for anything. We do not take anyone's word that Mason County Garbage quote would have done this or that. We do not assume this is the best deal available when no formal bid process was performed to prove it. Decisions like such as this should be made on the merits, not on personal relationships with Mason County Garbage or anyone else. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Marilyn Ward.
Marilyn Ward, good evening, council and mayor and deputy mayor. I just wanted to stand up here and bring up something that I think I've brought up about two other times since I've been coming to these meetings, and since I've lived in Shelton, which is going on six years now. I can't understand why we don't have any signs out on 101. And I stopped in the Chamber of Commerce, asked about it when I first moved here. Why there's nothing on, you know, city center, tourist activities, nothing. Food, Safeway, you know, if I was driving, and I was a person driving on 101 many times, looking for a home up here, I never came to Shelton. It just, you know, it's like, there's nothing there. You drive down other parts of the freeway and you see all of these things that are marked off. Oh, there's sherries at this exit, and there's antiques at this exit, but Shelton has nothing. And I've been told that this is being worked on, but it's still another summer, halfway over, and nothing is out there to attract people into our city. And I just, I don't really understand it. I've looked into it. I've looked into how much it costs. And I also don't understand why it takes so long. So I just wanted to bring it up again, and hopefully by next summer, we'll have something out there.
Thanks, Marilyn.
That's it.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Okay, so thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are you ready for reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, can we have it read, please?
Vouchers numbered 18044 through 18115 in the amount of $903,742.32. voucher numbered 18116 in the amount of $7,527.64. Payroll warrants numbered 1958 through 2115, and 3797 through 3801, and 18013 through 18035 in the amount of $750,650.21.
Thank you, Donna. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I'll move, I'll make that motion that it's, to approve it as read.
Thank you, council member. There's a motion to move, and second, to accept this consent agenda as read. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved as read. Okay, first business agenda item is from Public Works Director Gregory, who's gonna talk about well number one rehab design project.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we are asking to enter into a contract with Gray &amp; Osborne for the design of the well one rehab and also the gravity water line that runs from well one to the high school tank, approximately a mile of water line in that area. We did go out for an RFQ back in May. We got two proposals that we ended up selecting, like I said, Gray &amp; Osborne, for that work. And the work had been budgeted through the 2018 budget at $95,000. It came in for design, or for funding level design, basically 20 to 25% design at $68,340, so well under the estimated budget that we had for 2018. And we will get through these 20 to 25 percents and then take a look at full design moving forward to eventually go after some sort of grant, most likely from Department of Health and Drinking Water.
Can you, can you explain to out there what potable water is, since some people don't understand what potable water is?
That is the water that you drink.
Okay, very good.
Is this $68,000? Is this, is this just for the design?
This is just for the 20 to 25% design. So basically, what they will do is they will come in, they'll take a look at, they've got a hydraulics expert consultant on staff that they will look at well one to see how they're going to rehab well one. It is in need of it. It's been since the last pump replacement, over 30 years. And it's recommended that you do that from 20 to 25 years, so it's well over that rehab life, and then looking at what the actual solution is to the gravity line. Because there are quite a few different elements. It goes into a clear well, out of well one, which isn't pressurized, and then gravity flows to the high school tank, so. And it goes into distribution from there also before it actually gets to the high school tank in certain spots. So there are quite a few things to take a look at. So they will take a look at not only the well, but they'll take a look at that gravity line and really come up with a concept of how we actually fix it, and then start into actually designing what that fix looks like and put together an engineer's estimate of what it's going to cost also.
The reason I was asking is because I, you know, this tells me that there's about 26,000 left over, 26,660, I think, and that doesn't seem to me like enough to repair the well. So I wondered if that was just for the design?
That is just for the design. And then in 2019, we'll likely budget for the, the remainder of that design and then look into 2020 for some grant funding for that project.
Why didn't the plan there was a year ago to rehab this well, why didn't that work out? They were gonna lower the head down and...
That was a much different project. So we did have some low interest loan funding. There was a proposed new water tank that was also going to go in that area. There was an expansion to tie in well one into the Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone. It was a much larger project that current staff doesn't feel is needed. It was a project that ran in the neighborhood of $6 to $7 million of grant funding or of loan funding that we would have ultimately ended up having to pay back, which would have...
That's not what I was talking about. There was a plan to, to rehab that well one, lowered the head down. It was $100,000 or $200,000.
So originally, former staff had informed the commission at the time that the water level was at a certain spot, and the well or the pump was actually located at a certain elevation. That was untrue. We ended up drawing that down to what was previously stated to the commission. We actually lowered that, that head level down below where they had actually said that the pump was located. So initially, we thought we had a real issue of drawdown in well one where we weren't able to actually use well one because we were afraid of burning up the pump that was in there. So we ended up drawing that down to, like I said, below where that pump level was actually set. We have not drawn it down past that. We've actually been utilizing it this summer. So to say that we need a rehab of well one is correct, but there was a little more emergency and need for it when we thought that we were having some serious issues with well one that we couldn't draw it down past that level that was previously stated. We don't have that issue now. We do have redundancy with well one, three, and four. So there's not that real emergency at this point to, to move forward. So we want to take this slow and make sure we get a proper design of how we actually rehab that, what size pump goes in there so that we can possibly expand out of that well and service other areas. So want to take some real time and take a real look at this and get a, get a proper design so we can get something that's functional for decades to come.
So that well head is still like 35 years old?
That is correct. That is, that is an issue, but we have not seen any indications that it is slowing down. Typically, the lifespan of those is somewhere between that 25 and 30-year range. But at this point, we're doing fairly well.
Do you have any guess, full design would, probably gonna be a couple hundred thousand, is that?
Full design, looks like it will be an additional, somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000, correct?
Okay, thanks, Craig.
And there are grants out there for design, so we will start looking for those also. We have contacted Department of Health and also Department of Ecology, looking for some assistance even moving forward with design, a full design of that. But we really, to apply for that, need a scope of what that actually looks like, what the cost is going to be to move forward.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Was there any other projects slated for that $95,000 budget item?
There was not. That was budgeted under professional services, and that was the only project that was defined to be used for that $95,000.
I'm not sure with projects like this with water, can the, the previous design investment go towards grant match dollars?
Yes, absolutely. Most of the time. Unfortunately, this, this area doesn't have a lot of grant funding available. Most of it is low interest loans. You can get some. We saw that with the Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone where a portion of it was grant funded and a portion of it was low interest loans. We did renegotiate that with Drinking Water and Department of Health and actually got the amount of grant funding actually doubled. But yeah, just to kind of keep that in mind in the future, there may be a need for us to utilize one of those low interest loans because there's just not a lot of grant funding out there. I know we did define this within the legislative priorities earlier in the week that we had talked about. So that may be an option also with our, our representatives to go out and try and get us some money for a project like this also.
Okay. Questions, comments? I concur to move it forward to the action item for next meeting.
Concur.
Okay, thanks, Craig. I guess you're also next, providing information on a design contract for the construction of a reclaimed water tank.
So again, another proposal, and actually the same consulting firm, Gray &amp; Osborne, won out on this RFQ also for the design of an expanded reclaimed tank at the Satellite Waste Water Treatment Plant out on Highway 101 near the Port property. Wastewater Treatment Plant out on Highway 101 near the Port property. Right now, there's a thirty to forty thousand gallon tank. We have expanded that. We, we cut into one of the other holding tanks to actually tie them together to expand or increase capacity somewhat, but we're in need in the future of something in the range of about three hundred to four hundred thousand gallons, especially if we get Hall Equities property developed or started to develop. That's going to be likely a low-impact development that's going to need to utilize reclaimed water. So right now, we do not have the capacity to hold any or much of the reclaimed water that's produced. Most of it goes to the spray field that's located out across from the correction center. We can hold a small amount, but when Washington State Patrol decides to flood their track, they end up emptying our holding tank, and we don't end up recouping any of that until most likely the next morning. So it is certainly in need. We will be looking at an in-ground tank, since it is right next to the airport and the flight paths, so likely an in-ground tank of somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred to four hundred thousand gallons.
Is there an average life cycle for a tank like that? Is it like something every forty years or twenty-five years we should be looking at?
Well, the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant tanks have been in for longer than that, and we have had no issues with them. So you're probably looking at, I'm guessing, I mean, unless you had like a major earthquake that cracked or some other circumstance, those are probably a century lifespan, I would imagine at least.
And reclaimed water is?
Reclaim, reclaimed water cannot be consumed. It's used for things like flushing toilets, irrigation, fire lines, things, things of that sort. Washing, like I said, the-
Flooding the wash, WSB.
They use it for their test track, and basically, it's like irrigation for them out there when they, when they wet their truck, track down for testing and training. So anything that basically can't be consumed.
Okay.
Who else uses this, this water?
Right now, the only users that we do have are the Tractor Supply Store. They use it for irrigation and fire flow, actually just irrigation. And then Washington State Patrol also uses it. There's been conversations of the correction center expanding and getting budget to expand their facility to use reclaimed water, since it's right across the street from them. And then there also have been talks with Mason County Public Works. Right now, they can't hook up because they, we wouldn't be able to provide them with a consistent flow, and that is their issue of getting off of their, not only potable water, but their, that system that they have right now also provides fire flow for them with that exempt well that they have. They don't want to get off of that until they can actually hook to reclaimed water. So that's been an issue for them also. But right now, we actually only have two users with more to come, obviously, once we get that expanded.
So I mean, I assume we sell this water at a lower rate and-
Yes, it is at a reduced rate, correct.
Protect our other water for-
And that is a huge concern. We have had many conversations with the Squawson Island Tribe and the whole Goldsboro Creek aquifer and pulling water out of that and coming up with other water conservation ideas. So certainly, the use of reclaimed water would, would cut into our overall consumption and put water back into that aquifer through that. And really, Shelton Hills or whatever development ends up coming on the west side of 101 is certainly going to be, like I said before, a low, low-impact development. So they will definitely be needing to use reclaimed water. So getting ahead of, eventually, what is going to be some very heavy users, I think, would be the right thing to do at this point. And right now, we are supplementing the reclaimed water with potable water right now every time Washington State Patrol kicks their system on. So we are using water that we technically could be selling at the increased rate for a reduced rate, just because we don't have the capacity to hold it.
And what did, what does the Washington State Patrol do with that water?
They basically flood their track for training for their cadets out at the academy.
I see, okay.
Other questions? Okay, we concur to move this forward to August seventh?
You concur.
All right. Thank you. Next item is about a change to a contract with Aspect, Director Gregory.
So we did halt work on the C Street landfill with grant funding being almost exhausted. There's about thirty thousand left out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar original amount that was grant funding from Department of Ecology. We have been working with them for quite some time to get additional funding, about six months now, that we've been having conversations and going over to Department of Ecology. I don't want to say begging for money, but almost begging for money from them to get this project back up and running again. But we have heard back from them, and we do think that there is a substantial grant waiting for us, just in processing. I did submit that request two weeks ago and should be finished up here shortly. So we are asking to expand the contract with Aspect to complete the remedial investigation and actually come up with a plan to close out the C Street landfill. And this funding that we have, that's coming from Department of Ecology, would certainly fund that entire amendment to this contract. It's two hundred and, almost two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, and Department of Ecology has indicated that they have six-hundred thousand dollars for us to complete this and then take the rest of that and put it towards the actual closeout of the C Street landfill. So we are optimistic that that will be coming through in the next couple of weeks, and we certainly will bring that to the council as soon as we see the contract from Department of Ecology.
Very good.
Sounds good to me.
I have a couple of questions. So if the Department of DOE grants do not come through-
If Department of Ecology grants do not come through, it certainly is a valid question. We do have funding available right now. The last in-fund balance that I saw for solid waste, which would pay for this type of work, was eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand. So wouldn't get us through likely the RI and the cleanup, but certainly would fund at least getting to a point where we finish the RI and got a closeout design for the C Street landfill. And then likely, with this funding, we would have somewhere in the neighborhood of, leaves us about five-hundred thousand, which then we would have to go after additional funding, grant funding, to actually clean up and close out the C Street landfill. So one way or another, we do have the funding available. It certainly is council's decision whether they would like to, if we don't see this money that we have been told we're getting from Department of Ecology, certainly is the council's decision to move forward with the city funds that we have available at this point and then look for grant funding in the future.
Okay. And then the closer plan that would come out at the end of this, spending this money, correct, that would be, as far as you could, that would be, unless something unexpected come up, that would be a complete closure plan, ready for action?
That's correct.
Wouldn't have to be any other additional studies, work, granting, it'd be a matter of, okay, you won't pull-
We, we are dealing with a consultant that we have got quite a bit of work into. We have seen consultants end up telling us that we needed additional funding to complete something. It wouldn't be the first time that we have run into that, but we have negotiated with Aspect and hopefully come up with a plan. They have given us a full description of all of their activities that are going to be done for this two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, which at this point does give us the indication that this is a full cleanup plan moving forward.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
All right. Move this to action next meeting?
Yes.
All right. Okay. The next item is for Community Development, Mark Ziegler, about moving relocation of the Welcome to Shelton log monument.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I'm bringing to you a topic that was started back in May of 2013, so hopefully we'll get to some resolution here fairly soon. If you remember right, there was a cedar log that was placed on Railroad Avenue, Welcome to Shelton inscription on that log that was developed through a process of volunteer labor and donations. Well, with the Shelton Historic Preservation Board's re-signing project back in 2013 necessitated the move of that log sign to put a historic sign at the entrance to downtown Shelton on Railroad Avenue. With that, the Historic Preservation Board and staff brought to the commission at that time six locations for replacement or relocation of that sign. There was two recommendations or two priorities that were given to the commission at that time, and you'll see in your packets, I should point out that there's minutes from the Historic Preservation Board from December 16th of 2014 that include those recommendations, as well as a picture of the sign. The top two locations were the median triangle at Mill and First and Pioneer Way and Harvard. I guess it's kind of that funky intersection down there in the triangle. The second location was the southwest corner of Brockdale and Wallace-Nielan Boulevard, so the corner of Watership Property. So the idea was, my recollection, my information I've been able to glean from some, some documents here is that it would be kind of an entryway to Shelton again, as it was intended down Railroad Avenue. So the, the sign was removed, new sign was placed, some volunteers with the Historic Preservation Board performed some remediation, some renovation on that sign. That has been completed and it's been in storage now for some time, and it's time to take some action on that in light of recent developments, maybe some conditions that were noticed back at the time that this action was taken or this recommendation was taken. I think it's safe to say, bring those to light again with the priority of that, the number one priority, I guess from the commission at that time, was to place that, the triangle at, at First and Mill. And the opportunity to re-align that road, and the placement of that is really the best place for a Welcome to Shelton sign. It would take some, since it's on a slope, it's not square, you know, not flat ground, it would take some work to place that and, and make it, make it work and make it look right. We also have tried to identify some of these triangles and roadside areas to rehab or renovate to alleviate some of the costs concerning these. They're quite often heavily vegetated, old vegetation, old irrigation, and they can be a real drain on resources and staff, especially through the season. And in fact, we've taken some, some measures to save some money recently and have shut off some irrigation on those, so it's kind of promoting the ability to relook at these islands and do something different with those. The second location up on Wallace and Brockdale, to my recollection, I'm not sure why it was, you know, why that wasn't selected, but that was the Historic Preservation Board's first choice to the, to commission at that time, because it would be an entryway. It's not really identified in any way coming in from Brockdale, you know, heading southbound or Johns Prairie, heading westbound at that point, which is where this, this sign would be visible. So at this point, staff is looking for some direction, which way to, which way the council might, might lean to place this sign once again in the community.
Well, I love the triangle. I think that's a great place, but I think it's too close to the big, the big log. Me and Nick, it's kind of, that doesn't say Welcome to Shelton, but anyway, coming down the hill, big-
Overlook Park.
Overlook Park. So, but I don't know about out there on Brockdale, I mean, how much traffic is coming from out of town into Shelton that would say Welcome to Shelton.
Mark, are you saying that the sign might be visible depending on placement, coming in from Johns Prairie as well?
Correct, yeah.
And, and the reason I ask that is that MCRAs has a heavy traffic, especially with tournaments in the summer, and so if that's a location we don't have signage, that might be a good fit?
Yeah, exactly. It could be essentially situated, so it could be seen from that intersection. It's a four-way stop now, so obviously, people heading westbound, people heading southbound.
Up on a hill.
Yeah, there is a slope there, it could be situated in, yeah.
I'm sure it is.
Mark, where did it used to be?
It was on Railroad, it was at 12th?
12th.
Craig, right at 12th, in the, in the median, just entering right at the railroad tracks, so they crossed Railroad Avenue.
Where that new sign is, right?
Now, there's the, the historic sign that was placed by the Shelton Historic Preservation Board, yes.
I like it downtown. You come in, you see the wheel, you come downtown and you see the Welcome to Shelton sign, and that's really where everybody's really coming from. They're coming from 101 into Shelton, in my opinion.
I like option two.
Brockdale.
Yeah. It's a good spot. There's not really much any, of anything out that way. There's, you know, notifying you in the city limits. There's a lot of growth going on with the school district work, the Parsley neighborhoods, the-
Shelton Springs subdivision, yes.
The Shelton Springs subdivision out there. It is in the city limits, and I think it's a good spot to remind people as they're traveling through.
Can you do a computerized picture of it sitting on the triangle and also-
Good idea.
On the little thing, just so we see what it looks like?
We can put that together.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, we can, yeah, we can, absolutely.
Photoshop it.
We'll give it a shot, yeah. We'll try to give you an addition, idea of what they're rendering. We might not be able to get perfect scale on it, but I think you can get an idea how it would look like.
At least you get an idea of what it would look like.
Yeah, and certainly, how it's, I think, going back to Deputy Mayor's question about visually, how it would be seen, obviously there, if you're coming down Harvard or potentially up, heading southbound up first, you might see the end of it, you might see the backside of it coming down Harvard or Pioneer Way. It wouldn't be visible. It's one-sided, if you look at the picture that's provided. The Welcome Shelton is carved on one side of it. So how that's placed would be a consideration there, and who you want to see it primarily.
Yeah.
Because that triangle is, what do we have, four, four streets basically coming into that, that intersection.
I'll just say, I, I love the triangle, but it, with the, you know, we've already got Overlook Park up there. I, I would be with Deirdre, probably tend to put it at another end of town, even though it may not be a high-traffic end, something different, Brockdale, so, so we have a mix of feelings.
Well, and there may be a number of visitors coming in from the Union area as well. Union is highly trafficked in the summer months, and that's their path into Shelton is to come that way. I also appreciate the staff's notes in here about the possible realignment at the triangle and the fact that Pioneer Way is quite a ways into the city. So to say welcome when they're already here isn't quite as appropriate, I would think.
I, I think Craig just brought up a good point as well. Most likely, it costs a little more because of the foundation work and what you might have to do to set it in that area, because it's not flat, it's not level. Most likely, we'd have to do a little more prep work and a little more foundation work to make that, to make that suitable for that location. So it's something that we can, we can bring back some more.
Whatever happened to the pear orchard part, putting it at the pear orchard?
These were all considered back in, back in 2013. If you'd like to consider beyond the top two recommendations from the Historic Preservation Board at that point, I'm not sure what, what staff presented, other than the briefing from 13 and what the discussion was there. I, I have the brief from 2013 and the recommendation from the commission at that point, but any other details, I, I don't have at my disposal right now.
It'd be kind of cool there, the David Shelton's pear orchard, Welcome to Shelton. Just a thought.
Mark, do you have any recommendation or anything on your-
I, I think the Historic Preservation Board took an interest in this. They were essentially responsible for its removal from its original location.
Yeah.
So they did consider all of, all of the locations and came up with recommendations. Part of the discussion previously was preservation of this and how it might be received, I guess, by the community. You know, we talked about First and Railroad, and, you know, if it's close to a sidewalk and a lot of pedestrian traffic, would it be vandalized? Would it be more approachable? Would it, how visible would it be in certain locations? So those are all the things that Historic Preservation Board considered, and that's why they came to the conclusion of these two locations as their priorities. If you'd like to- If you'd like to reexamine that, I could take it back to them as well at this point. We've been, what, four or five years into this at this point? We can certainly.
That's okay.
Stretch it out another month or two.
I was just wondering.
You don't have anything against any of the sites?
I certainly don't.
Is that a better way of to ask the question?
Certainly don't.
Okay.
Well, and I'd say if there's no real strong feelings one way or the other, it sounds like there's some positives and negatives at each, if budget is a factor, to me, that's one more thing leaning towards moving it to Brockdale.
Do you want to recommend that, or you want further discussion?
Can I see the pictures first?
We can bring them back on the seventh with some.
I would really like that.
With some renderings of the two locations, or would you like to see any additional locations besides that?
At the pear orchard.
No.
Yes.
I would think that we should.
No, I like to see it at the pear orchard.
My only thought is that I echo Mark's remarks that the Historical Preservation Board has put this forward, and I think to decide that their two options aren't the primary options could be a little bit disconcerting. So unless we have really strong feelings about that, I would rather just stick with the top two.
Could you do a one at the pear orchard, just to see what it looks like?
I'm looking back and seeing where.
David Shelton's pear orchard.
Exactly, but that's a large area.
That was number six on the list.
Dead last.
Yeah, we have the park, we have the park and ride, there is some locations to the east of where the park ride might be located. How visible is it? I could take a run at a picture down there, sure.
Okay, thanks.
And all the locations, my main question, especially the Brockdale, would be, is it going to be viewable from both, like you said, Johns Prairie coming in?
You bet.
And Brockdale coming in south?
There's good lighting there, too.
Well.
You're biased, Joe, you don't get a load on this here.
We can take some pictures from the street side, too, with maybe, you know, just a visual of what you see coming to the intersections at both locations, so council can take a look at those.
That sounds great.
Earlier this evening, Councilmember Crohn voiced his support for Brockdale.
That's right.
Thank you, Mark.
Absolutely.
Okay, next item, Police Chief Moody is going to discuss a resolution to have to do with surplusing or police vehicle surplus.
Signs are a lot easier than signs in water. What we're asking today is just request the surplus of two of the older vehicles in the fleet that we've pretty much stripped all the parts off of them that we could possibly use, and they're not worth anything to us anymore, they're not even drivable, one of them. So I've just requested a resolution of the surplus of these two vehicles be sold to whatever we can get for them, and that money go back into the Vehicle Repair Fund for the police department. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Okay, implore to move that forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, on to the action items. Director Gregory will present a resolution having to do with drone policy.
So we did have a couple of changes for you from the policy that we presented to you a week ago. John Collins has weighed in with some, just some clarification, I think, with public privacy and some other issues. So we did highlight those. I think Donna gave each of you a copy of those, so I would be happy to answer or pass it off to John to answer any questions that you might have with this policy. I will tell you, it is an awesome tool that we have had so far. I wished we would have had it before we actually started the Downtown Connector Project to give you some before and after photos from that, but we have gotten some of it.
I was going to ask you how long we had it.
Yeah, not that long, and haven't been able to fly it over those sections either without having a policy in place and employees with the flight certification, so. But it will be a great tool in the future.
How many are we looking, how many employees are we looking at will be certified to fly?
We are looking at a flight team of four employees, all from the Public Works Engineering staff.
And two are currently training, is that correct?
One has actually passed and got passed last Wednesday, and we will have another testing most likely next week.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we talk about insurance at all in this, having insurance?
I don't think insurance is actually covered within the policy, and maybe I'm going to just hit Vicki Look with this one. She might have more insight than anybody on insurance as far as something like this goes.
I haven't looked into our insurance, but it's an asset, so I'm sure we should be adding it to our property schedule and then insurance as far as operation of it, yeah. I think we will, I'll give them a call up there and talk to them.
Yeah, but I only bring it up because I may or may not have experience with that side of UAS operations.
Recently?
Could be potentially expensive, and it would be good to be covered if such things exist, you know, for.
Yeah, I'm sure we need it on the property schedule for coverage, but. Also for any sort of risk management issues, for sure.
Yeah, if it were to fall out of the sky and hit something.
Yeah.
Making sure that we're financially covered.
We'll definitely have an answer to that before we put it up in the air.
So do you have a story?
Just have photos, and that's about it, so.
And Councilmember Schmidt will fill us in on his knowledge of this issue. Okay, so we want to go ahead with the motion?
I have one more thing I'd just like to discuss with John. 5.3 Part B, the blue underline, any videos or images depicting private information will be withheld from public disclosure to the extent permitted by the Public Records Act. Can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so this is something that the city would probably do anyway, but I thought it was important to state it specifically in the policy because the policy is going to be essentially a public record, and people of the public might be interested to see the policy. Essentially, there's a possibility that while the city is operating drones, the footage that we collect might contain private information that could be exempt under the Public Records Act. And this essentially notes that when the city's processing any of these videos that might be requested for public disclosure, that we withhold to the extent the Public Records Act allows any images that depict private information that's exempt under the Public Records Act. Does that make sense? So it's essentially just making sure that we are, when we're, anytime, it's to protect essentially the privacy interests that are, I think, are important here, just making sure that we rely on the exemptions as much as we can to withhold any private information that we might, you know, inadvertently collect as we're operating the drones.
And any of the other data or imagery collected on the city right-of-way or city property is public disclosure, is subject to public disclosure?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it would have to be done on a case-by-case basis, so, you know, the way this would work essentially is in the future, if we get a public disclosure request for a video that was done on a certain date or time, someone's going to have to basically watch the video and then make a determination if there's any private information on that video that we could somehow withhold under the Public Records Act. And then, and this is kind of the tough thing to do, sometimes you have to pay a contractor to redact the video or just something like that.
Garble it out, like the cops when your face is on.
Yeah, I mean, depending on what information is there, right? Although the way that most cities use these sort of public works drone programs, I doubt that we would be collecting a lot of private information that would be exempt, but that's just sort of a reminder to, as we're processing those public records requests, to sort of assure, you know, any privacy interests of the public who are basically concerned with the way the city is like driving drones over the city, right, that we're doing it in a way that protects those privacy interests. Because there is, one of the main concerns of operating these drone programs is that the city can be sued for what's known as invasion of privacy, which is a tort, essentially. And one of the ways we can, you know, sort of mitigate that potential liability is by essentially assuring the public that we will be withholding private information to the extent that we can under the Public Records Act, and that's essentially why I included it.
And that, yeah, it'd be subpoenaed, prosecutors and defense attorneys?
That's a complicated question. It's possible. It's possible that it could be subpoenaed, but again, we've also decided that we, we're not going to be sharing that information with other agencies. So if there's legal grounds, I'll say this, if there's legal grounds for a subpoena, then the information can be subpoenaed. And that's true with any public record, for example. I mean, we could have documents in here that might be exempt under the Public Records Act, but if there's a separate legal basis for a court-ordered subpoena, that can essentially override the exemption. That's just, it's rare that that happens, right? But that's a possibility, and so videos would be the same. If there was information in the video that a prosecutor was able to show sufficient grounds for a subpoena, then they could get a court to issue it, and then the city would have to comply.
What are you going to do with all this data? I mean, I don't know how these things work. Is it stored on there and then you take a chip out of there just to get a computer and just store it forever?
Yes. And I did kind of have a question related to the data collection last, my last question with this is, is there a records retention schedule sort of identified with these as well, and what is that?
Yeah, I think Craig can maybe talk more about that because I know, we talked about it in the past about how there's records retention, there's a records retention part of the policy, I believe.
Section three.
Yeah. I remember reading that one.
Just before section four. Washington State Archives' most current common records retention schedule.
The only reason I bring that up is because after potentially a few years of flying these, it's very high-resolution video, takes up a lot of space, and it equals a resource that potentially could be kind of a challenge to deal with down the line, so just thoughts with that. If it's not usable footage, delete it, is my guess.
Right.
Yeah, that's my point, so.
Well, we have to retain it like a public record essentially, but yeah, once we no longer have to retain it, then we can delete it.
If I can answer part of that, help out me a little bit with our body cameras. We actually have a redaction software program, and it's stored in the cloud, so there is no hard storage.
Yeah, okay.
So essentially, it would be the same, you could do the same thing. You could get software programs that will store it elsewhere and have redaction programs built into them. So that's what we do, and we get exactly the records you're speaking of, and it can't be released, that portion of it, it has a redaction program, you can program in there and automatically redax it.
Thanks, Chief. Do you have to add a public comment?
There is no public.
Okay, thank you, Donna. So we're ready for a motion on this?
I move to adopt Resolution 1134-0718, a resolution adopting an unmanned aerial system drone operations and policy manual. Second.
Okay, those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion passes.
Vicki, do we need a reading of that resolution before we actually?
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, but I didn't mention that earlier, Mayor.
It wasn't on the briefing, so I couldn't include it.
Sorry.
But I can do it.
Thank you, Donna.
Resolution number 1134-0718, City of Shelton, policy 1000-05, in the matter of adopting an unmanned aerial system, UAS drone operations and policy manual.
Okay. Should we re-vote? Can I have a motion to pass the resolution?
Have to redo it, Kev.
Redo it?
Yeah.
All right. I move to adopt Resolution 1134-0718, a resolution adopting an unmanned aerial system drone operations and policy manual.
Second.
Okay, those in favor of accepting Resolution 1134-0718, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, resolution passes.
Twice.
Thank you, Craig.
Sorry, I didn't mention that earlier.
Oh, that's, thank you very much. Next is Director Gregory is going to share about information to Department of Commerce grants for Basin Three project.
So we have discussed these in the past, the two, the direct appropriation and the reappropriation for 1.455 million. We finally got contracts from Department of Commerce, and we are just looking to authorize the mayor to sign those contracts and execute those.
Okay. Anyone sign up for public comment?
No.
All right. Comments, questions from the council?
No questions.
Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the two direct appropriation grants by authorizing the mayor to sign both funding contracts.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept and approve the two funding agreements with the Department of Commerce, those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, next, Director Gregory has information about amendment to the Mason County garbage contract.
Mayor and council members, we are loading up that presentation once again. I will go through it, it's only four slides. I'm going to skip over the majority of it unless you have any questions with any portion of this. I think we've talked about this quite a few times. We did add a couple of things that were requested by council members from the last meeting. We did enlarge the font on this slide so that you could better see what we were proposing from the last meeting or two meetings ago was the CPI increase and where we projected that and looking back in the past of where we would have been if we would have entered into a contract back a decade ago, and looking at that and being able to forecast where we really look like we would have been if we would have entered into this contract 10 years ago. If there are no questions, I will move to the other item that was requested by council, and that was a rate comparison. So we went out and looked for comparable cities. It was a little difficult to get rates from other cities. A lot of them are contracted and not a lot of rates are posted, so we did a lot of phone calls and inquiries and came up with this list of comparable cities and also the area just outside of the city limits in Mason County and what the rates are for non-city residents, and we have identified those. Not very many of the ones that we found were every other week, so I think if you take a look at that on a weekly basis, you could virtually double what our rate is and get a comparison. There are a few that, unique circumstances where they don't provide recycling. One of them, I believe, it's Port Townsend that doesn't also provide a can. They make you provide your own can to be picked up. So if you have any questions on this, I certainly could answer them. We did try to use some comparable cities that we've used in the past with this list and then added a few additional ones to that list that we used for comparables.
I'll just ask one question, make a comment. The base rate does not include any kind of utility tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'll just make a comment that I've done similar research, different cities or some of the same cities, and it's comparable what I found.
So if you don't have any more questions on this comparison slide, we certainly can move forward. John Collins has reviewed this entire contract once again, another set of legal eyes on it, and we did hear back from him that there were no recommended changes to this contract. So we are asking at this point that the council move forward and vote on this amendment to the contract for Mason County garbage.
Thank you, Craig. Public comment?
Yes, Randy Lewis.
First of all, again, as far as those backfilled numbers, we do not know how many expenses and indirect costs were piled on, so it's not appropriate to compare that to what might have happened. Also, if you're comparing to current rates elsewhere, did they have a 2.5% guaranteed increase for 10 years, meaning the average rate is 15% higher in the next 10 years? I want to talk to you about these amendments. I want to talk to you about these amendments. Years from now, when you run for office again, your actions this year may drive voter decisions about your political futures. The truth will come out. It always does, especially in our small community. Here is the truth. These amendments are not the result of unforeseen difficulties of privatization. We first saw and commented on these issues long ago. We pointed out early the dishonest, illegal, and deliberately hiding of the utility tax on the invoices. The amendments correct this and other items arising from misdeceptions such as applying the state tax rate against a deliberately false base rate. Among the falsehoods is that the specific utility tax rates were negotiated. Not true. The specific number was the result of a deliberate and dishonest effort to hide the additional utility tax. The city was not even aware that what the actual utility tax number was until we pointed out in public that the utility tax could not be the 31% staff originally presented in a proposed ordinance. No, there has been a change since the last time. A material change in the amendment now requires, rather than allows, the total charge be reduced reflect potential decreases in the utility tax. That is a material change from the last presentation. We pointed out the flaw in the original amendment that is allowing only increases in future rates. We mentioned items we have pointed out because we cannot believe we are the ones that still must carry the ball on this. Based on discussions pre-election, we are amazed this is the case. Damage control from the city has been breathtaking. Years from now, you may have to explain why garbage rates increased 18% because of the change in the Seattle-Tacoma-Beltview inflation index. You will be asked by the cap went away after 10 years. I'm still waiting for a promised answer on that. Other cities have rate increases tied to inflation indices. However, these are mitigated by such things as a cap for the full duration of the contract by applying only a percentage of the change or the ability to renegotiate or exit the agreement at certain intervals. This contract does none of that, rather is an unreasonable deal cast in stone for a generation. An opportunity has been made possible because now you now must amend an invalid contract. If all you do is rubber stamp these amendments, this is not thinking outside the box and contradicts other statements made during the campaign. The garbage deal accomplishes just the opposite of giving back to the community as several of you claimed you intended to do during the election. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Mayor, one other thing that I failed to point out with this is we did get a request from council that we add the tipping fee calculation and also the starting rate when the contract was signed at the Mason County transfer station. So we have included those also just for clarification. So I wanted to point that out because I know that was asked by the council that we provide that. So we have provided that also.
Okay. Comments or questions? Okay, well, I have comment, but I wrote it down because I want to get it clear. So pardon me for reading this. Anybody else have comments? Okay. Our discussion tonight revolves around an existing legal contract for which the city has proposed an amendment to clarify the city utility tax billing and several other provisions. I very much appreciate the research, comments, and suggestions of the public on the contract. The input has helped with several issues where we have adjusted and clarified language and city ordinances and contract amendment. The contract includes many provisions that were instituted during negotiations with the contractor and were approved in the final contract. Based on looking at some of our neighboring cities, the contract includes a very low base rate with maybe a slightly more risk for future escalation. And that, the base rate was again shown in Craig's slides. However, contract provisions seem reasonable to me and I'm prepared to move ahead on this amendment. Some of the other issues that were brought up by the public was involving the use of the indirect costs that were part of the solid waste fund that reverted back to the general fund. The only thing I can say on that in our current budget situation and looking forward to the budgeting in 2019, those funds will be properly dealt with as far as what is the best use for them. And that's all I'll say about those. I think that's not even an issue moving forward, is that those general funds will be appropriated to the best use as far as the council and the city believes. So that's my statement and I'm ready to move forward. So do we, no other comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 1133-0718, a resolution of the City of Shelton superseding Resolution 1128-0518. The city, oh, I'm on the wrong page.
You are.
I'm sorry.
I read the resolution.
This is the amendment. I move to approve the changes to the Mason County garbage contract by authorizing the city manager and public works director to sign contract amendment number one.
Second. That's what I meant to say.
Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of amending the current agreement with Mason County garbage, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, everyone. Now we'll go on to community development. Mark Ziegler here to present a resolution having to do with amendment to the 2018 fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. Tam bringing to you Resolution number 1133-0718, and this is a resolution of the City of Shelton superseding Resolution 11280518 to adjust the city's fee schedule. As of July 1st, 2018, the state instituted a new fee for commercial building permits of $25 and raised the residential building permit fee from 450 to 650. So those are fees that we pass on to the applicant and remit back to the state when they are paid on a quarterly basis. So I'm asking today for approval and reading of that resolution.
So these monies are tacked on to what the customer pays and then you take that $6.50 or $25 back and that goes to the state, right?
Correct. This is in addition to the city's building permit fees.
Right, okay.
These are collected on top of the city's building permit fees per our fee schedule and then they are remitted back to the state in its entirety.
Any public comment on this one?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further council questions, comments? Okay. Can we have the resolution read, please?
Resolution number 1133-0718, a resolution of the City of Shelton superseding Resolution number 1128-0518, the city fee schedule revising fees.
Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 1133-0718, a resolution of the City of Shelton superseding Resolution 1128-0518, the city fee schedule revising fees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 1133-0718, a fee schedule adjustment. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Resolution is adopted. Okay, I think we're to administrative reports.
Yes, we're just going to have a little bit of an update on the recruitment for our city manager. And we have presented the applications and they've been gone through by the city council. And the direction was is that we have four candidates that will move forward for the interview process. Our recruiter, Slavin, is now doing background checks on those four individuals and so we'll be bringing that forward. We are on schedule for having the interviews on the 30th and 31st and we will be having an open house on the evening of the 30th. So we're pretty excited about this coming up in the next couple of weeks and that was, just wanted to update as far as where we are and how many people will be participating in the interview process. At least that's what our expectation is at right at this point.
Thank you, Becky.
Sure.
Craig, do you have an update too, Craig?
Public Works does have a couple of things to update you on. C Street landfill update that we gave a couple of weeks ago, we just wanted to point out that that update was mandated by the courts that we give every six months. So whatever information that we do have at that point, whether it be complete or not, needs to be presented in public to the council per those requirements. So what we brought you was not a complete report. It was the report that we had at the time. So as soon as that report is complete, we will certainly bring it forward. Now, looking at, continuing on with the remedial investigation, certainly that work will continue. And as soon as that report is complete, we will certainly bring it back to you and present it in public and take public comment on it once again. So just wanted to clarify that that was not a complete report, that it was the requirement that we bring it forward even in whatever state that it was in.
Thanks for clarifying that.
You're welcome. And then just a projects update for you on the three major projects that we have going right now. I did give you a cost breakdown of those last week. If you do not have that, I certainly have copies of that again if you would like another copy of that. Any council members? So I will start with Turner Avenue. Paving has, yes.
I'm sorry.
So paving has started on Turner Avenue, started this morning early. And they got about a quarter of the way done with Turner Avenue on that project and they are slated to finish up. They had a breakdown at the plant. They were getting asphalt from today, so a little bit of a snag in that project, but they are scheduled to be completed with not only Turner Avenue but also Holly Drive from Turner to 14th and also 12th Street from May to Turner by the end of the day on Thursday. So hopefully no more breakdowns. We have not had any change orders on that project, so it really is going to come down to the number of tons that we use in asphalt. If we come in under budget or not, we certainly will be on time. One thing to point out with all of these that I really wanted to get across to the council is, the next one that I am going to talk about is sewer basin three. It does have a minor change order within the contract and is allowed for minor change from Department of Ecology and also Commerce. So there is a contingent, basically a contingency built into that contract of 250,000 for any changes to that project. Just a point for all of you to keep in mind is the roadway projects through TIB do not allow for minor change. So you are looking at basically what the contract was signed for. If you have any changes whatsoever, those are cost overruns. Every time that we get a change order, it's not allowed through that process. So at the end of the project, we can go back to Transportation Improvement Board and they have indicated that they, it's a fairly common practice for them to take on change orders even though they don't allow them upfront, which is an interesting way of doing things. But if you have any changes to either one of those projects, Turner or Downtown Connector, those are added on to the original contract and there is no contingency built into the actual contract. So just something to keep in mind moving forward. So with that being said, basin three has been on schedule. You'll see that we have about 6.34 million available to us all in grant funds. That contract was almost 6 million to date. The 250,000 minor change that is built in, we have had a total of two change orders, which is, at this point, I guess, unexpected. We would have expected a few more of those being in a fairly old part of downtown Shelton that we would have seen some more issues in that area. But the two have been some fairly major changes. I know they're called minor change orders, but they have been fairly significant in the overall cost. We did have a de-watering change of 95,000 to the de-watering system down there in that area. Originally, it was slated to have deep water wells that were paid by well. That system was changed and identified that it was a necessary change to go to a shallower point well system. So basically a bunch of smaller well systems spread throughout that south or I guess east downtown area within the project limits. So basically south of Third Street to First and from Alder to, back to Henry. So basically that smaller area of the south or the, sorry, the east portion of that project. So that was a fairly significant change to the overall project of 95,000. And then the laterals that we have under structures that we were having a difficulty addressing, we have addressed. We are fairly happy with the new proposal and any of those that are under structures or just things that we can't get to will be done through pipe bursting. And the overall change to the contract was fairly insignificant. It looks like that it will increase somewhere in the neighborhood of about $7,000 to do pipe bursting for all of those so that we pick up every lateral that we possibly can. There are still going to be a few of those out there where the resident just doesn't let us on their property even to do pipe bursting, which would just be a small receiving pit. But we do have a couple out there that just have indicated that they don't want us on their property at all. So that makes it...
Pipe bursting is?
So basically what pipe bursting is, is we've got older laterals out there, could be concrete, PVC, some of them are clay pipe. And basically they put a head through the pipe that's connected to a hose and it's got fins on it that end up popping out. And basically they pull it back through the pipe and the fins basically break the existing pipe and spread it so that they can at the same time, right behind that, pull a new HDPE pipe, which is a thick, black, rubbery type pipe. They would pull that right behind that fin mechanism that breaks up the pipe so that there is no digging. It basically goes in the same place, pulled through the same pipe that was there that would have been in the ground before. And that is done four inch to four inch. So we would go from a four inch lateral of whatever was out there PVC, concrete, clay to a four inch inside diameter HDPE pipe.
What happens if the person doesn't want you on their property?
We do not have the ability to then give them a new lateral and that is a chance that then they take because within our code, the property owner is responsible for their lateral from the sewer main to the house.
Do they have to sign papers or some?
You have to sign a paper, a right of entry for us to get on your property. And if you don't sign that, then we don't get on your property. So it's not signed that we can't get on, it's signed if we can get on.
Is there something signed saying I am responsible for any future, the homeowner is responsible for any future work that has to be done at their expense?
No, that is addressed within our code and we have indicated to those residents that have not wanted to sign the right of entry. We have spoken to all of them and told them that what the ramifications are that if we don't get on their property to replace their lateral. So that has been communicated. Unfortunately, there are still a couple of holdouts out there. Hopefully we can get them here in the future, but at this point, we do have a couple.
Isn't there a requirement when they, if they were to pull a building permit, that they would be required at that point as well to deal with the side sewer?
Upgrade their system? Yes.
So if they intend to do any improvements to their residence that would require pulling a permit, then they would potentially be opening themselves up to that as well?
Yeah. And we do that with backflow devices, any, basically any upgrades that need to be done.
Right.
That's when we address them is if they were doing some kind of addition, whatever that might be.
And what's the cost to the homeowner right now to have this done, connected to their house?
The cost is zero. It is done through the project and no cost to them. Likely you would be looking at somewhere in the range of if you were to do an individual lateral, depending on just a, if it were just a standard lateral, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about $3,000 to $5,000 if you were doing just one lateral that was a standard lateral. Pipe bursting, I'm guessing for a mobilization fee and getting somebody out here to do one lateral through pipe bursting would be much more expensive than even... expensive than even just that $3,000 to $5,000 range. So, but we have given those homeowners all of that information, and we're still working on them to see if we can't get on their property to get those done.
So, you've communicated about the building permit that they're-
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. So, quite a bit of contingent, contingency still left within that project. So, we are looking in pretty good shape as far as that project goes. That does include all of the paving in that downtown area. Like I, like I said, we've got about 300,000, about 350,000 even above and beyond the $250,000 minor change that's left in contingency. And one thing that I will point out is that is for construction only. That does not include any staff time, consultants, anything like that within that, within those dollar amounts. That is just construction only. Any more, any questions on basin three, or any more information that you would like to hear on basin three?
Can I go back to Turner, one quick question?
Sure.
If they complete on Thursday, does that mean traffic will be allowed soon thereafter?
Usually, you're looking at sometime about four to five hours after the paving is complete that we will open the road back up. It's open tonight. Should have been opened around eight o'clock tonight. They finished up around 4:30 or so. And just getting that temperature down to about 150 degrees, then we can get cars back on that without damaging the map. So, whenever they do finish up, hopefully, they stay on schedule. They're scheduled to finish up sometime late afternoon on Thursday. So, hopefully, Thursday evening, we'll get that roadway back open and, and finished up.
Right, thanks, Craig.
Yep, you're welcome. And then, the last project is Downtown Connector project. Total funding available through the Transportation Improvement Board, and the supplemental transportation budget is 4.49 million. Right now, the contract is sitting at 4.33 million. So, we've got, we've got a little bit more or contingency. Again, no minor change in this one. We have had a couple of, we've had three minor changes that have come through, two to the negative, and one that would be an increase we did have in the contract originally. The bus shelter was in the contract that will be provided by Mason Transit, and also a rapid flasher that's around $13,000 that I have been talking to Danette Brannan from MTA. We did discuss at one time of them providing up to two rapid flashers. So, we are still in communications with that, and likely, those will be a negative change. I guess, depending on how you word this, a positive change to the project, that it will be a decrease in the overall contract amount. And then, one change that will end up costing us slightly more was a change order to remove concrete panels to underground utilities. So, PUD3, Hood Canal, Century Link. The county has one line that crosses Alder that we wanted to get just for aesthetics and overall use of that area to get it out off of the wooden poles that are located within sidewalks. To get all of that undergrounded was a change for demo through that project of, just short of $30,000 to do utility trenches at Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Seventh. And Seventh was a requirement for the traffic signal. We had to eliminate some overhead lines because they were conflicting with the actual signal. But with that concrete being rebarred and over a foot thick, demo was pretty extensive down there to get that stuff out of the ground and get an open trench, so that we could get conduit in there and get those utilities underground. So, it was a change that we didn't see coming for those trenches and, and what was actually in the air. So, we did have a change of around $30,000 for the utility trenches that I mentioned. But again, those are things that are going to be cost overruns, but we do have some contingency built in there as far as funding goes. And then, like I said, we can apply to Transportation Improvement Board at the end of the project to increase funding level, to address some of those minor changes.
This changing the subject a little bit on that, but you talked about the Mason Transit doing a bus stop there with a bus, every bus area. Have we heard anything else from the Mason Conservation District on their, are they going to help with the rain gardens or any of the natural?
They have already helped. So, they did most of the design of the rain garden and actually vetted the actual landscaping. So, low, low impact, low irrigation or drought-resistant plants that would go in. So, they did a lot of legwork as far as suggestions of vegetation and, and the design of the rain garden.
Did we see any of those? I don't remember seeing any.
Any of the design?
Yeah.
We did. In the public meetings, we had visuals and, and artist renderings of what that would look like.
Okay.
Yes.
Memory short.
And one thing to note on Downtown Connector, they have been very aggressive, and they are much ahead of schedule at this point. They have been moving fairly quickly and, and getting things done. They are looking to try to get basically everything done on that project. I think it's fairly ambitious, but they're looking to get everything done except for the wearing course, which would be the top two inch lift on the actual roadway. They are looking to get that done by the end of October. So, you will see a roundabout, new sidewalks, illumination, everything of that. They're telling us by the end of October. So, fairly aggressive.
Exciting.
Are they incentivized at any point in this project to finish early?
They are not. I think they are looking at the economy and wanting to get out and, and move into the next project. So, they want to get in and out as quickly as possible. But no, nothing, nothing incentivized from the City of Shelton or, or Transportation Improvement Board.
Okay. Thanks, Craig.
Do we have any idea where we're going to get bids back to the 20 blocks? And are we going to actually do those this summer?
Yes, we are going to do those this, it's probably going to be into this fall. We are going to send those out by the end of this week, and they are going out to the small works roster through MRSC. So, we aren't, we are going out to bid, but it's, it's a select group. There are about 200 vendors on that list that we will be sending that out to all of them. So, all of them will be seeing it. We have had a couple of inquiries from a couple of local pavers, and also had an inquiry today from Northern Asphalt that's doing Turner Street that indicated that they would like to bid on the 20 residential blocks also. So, those will be going out by the end of the week, should have bids back in the next couple of weeks. So, we'll be bringing that forward to you and letting you know when, what that schedule looks like. But likely, it will be towards the middle to end of September when we actually do that work. And the reason for that is, we wanted to get through the real busy season. Public Works has been pretty busy with some of these other projects. And there's quite a bit of work out there to be done on those 20 residential blocks as far as city utilities. So, water, galvanized lines that might be under those roadways, sewer that might be old mains, and, and addressing stormwater also. It's been quite a bit of work. We've seen some pretty good transformations out there in the field, but it's taken some time. Wilson Street has been grown in. Residents have encroached on the right of way. So, that roadway, we've taken some, some pictures of that. So, we'll be bringing those back to you. But that was widened out to the full width of the right of way, and, and the roadway centered in the middle, and new storm drainage, some new sewer up in that area. So, those things take some time, and, and we've been trying to get through those. We didn't want to go to bid until we had a good handle on how long that was actually going to take us with the five-year no-cut ordinance in place. We certainly didn't want to put a new roadway over something that either had some failing infrastructure, or infrastructure that just wasn't there. And one thing to point out also is, we did stub out water and sewer outside of the right of way to every vacant lot or a lot that could be subdivided. So, we tried to think ahead, make sure that we weren't going to get caught with another Lake Boulevard issue, that we didn't have those utilities stubbed outside the roadway and end up having issues with that. So, we've stubbed out on all 20 blocks at this point to any vacant lot.
Anything else?
North Cliff going to be open anytime soon?
North Cliff's got about two more weeks on it. It's a fairly slow go up that fairly steep slope. They are doing everything they can do to keep those banks standing up and, and getting pipe in the ground. They're fairly deep up there, and they, they've run into a few issues. We had an alignment issue with a stormwater line that was not called out on the plans. It ended up being the IE of the pipe, so basically, the flow line of the pipes. The sewer and the storm crossed each other, and they were at the exact same elevation. So, we had to go back in and reroute the, the stormwater system up in that area. And it didn't slow the contractor down. They ended up digging through it. They don't work on Friday, so we went back in on a Friday and relocated that storm line. But it has been a fairly slow go for them up that hill. So, a couple more weeks.
The gas company's about done, aren't they?
Gas company should be finished up next week. We have had a discussion of a partnership with them. I don't know if it's going to work out. I don't know if we will be bringing it back to the council or not, but we did have a meeting with them and looked at all of the trench patches and receiving pit patches that they are going to do. There's quite a few of them on Railroad Avenue. We brought them in, met with them, and asked them what the cost was to them to patch all of those, to see if it was, it would be a consideration for us to partner with them and actually just repave that road with them contributing what they would be paying to actually fill the, the patches that they have open now. I think that's going to be a stretch at this point, after talking to them and actually having the Transportation Improvement Board engineer in this week. And we gave him a potential project for funding for this year, which was railroad from Eighth Street out to the city limits, along with a sidewalk project. And he indicated to us with all of the funding that we have received from them, it wasn't likely that we would get a large project like a roundabout, but it was likely that we would get something like Railroad Avenue from Eighth Street to the city limits and possibly a sidewalk project to go along with it. So, at this point, we're fairly confident that that is the direction that we want to move in. But we're still running some numbers and, and trying to come up with what that looks like.
Anything else, Vicki?
I think that's it.
Okay, I think we're ready to adjourn. Our next regular meeting will be August 7th at 6:00 PM, not 7, at 6:00 PM. We're adjourned.